Okay, thank you. I think we'll hit the reset button. Let's uh and for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of 2010, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And once again, for the record, let's take our roles. Bill.
And Suzanne.
Yes.
And James.
Here.
Stephen.
Here.
And Sarah here. Missing from this evening's meeting are Roddy Yagan and Anthony Moorn. We have a forum of five. And we will review and approve the October meetings minutes at the January meeting. Then with that, we can proceed with our old business. And that is PLTC 2023 0043, that is RPI as the applicant. One Ten Eighth Street. Thank you for your patience. Please come forward and describe to us if you would some of the new materials and some background for this application.
Thank you very much. Michael Ginsburg from Patterson, San Francisco, Griffin, Florida, Alabama. Like last time, I just want to mention that we've updated the submission based on the feedback that you both provided in the last meeting. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jason to describe what he's done. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Nice to be here with you guys tonight. Again, Jason Pollard with DJ on behalf of RPI. I'm going to try to keep it as short and sweet as I can. Got to make up there's some time. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. That's all good, correct? Correct. All right, so real brief overview. Two different sites on campus. One, we're calling Freshman Hill. That's at the south end of the alumni sports and rec parking lot. So at the south end of that lot is the planned pavilion. There's some landscaping, hardscape to kind of connect. Kind of upper multi-purpose sport court on the parking lot on top of Freshman Hill. The second site is what we're calling Sunset Terrace. And so we're proposing a new pavilion at the corner of Sunset Terrace and Beeman Lane. Kind of nice, nice view of the valley below. So last time again, you know, thank you guys for your feedback and comments last time. I think that was really, really, really great feedback. We went back to the drawing board. And, and so basically why I'm here today is to give you an update on where we landed. So the first comment was to provide some sort of additional or supplemental access from Freshman Hill to main campus because the softball facility is ongoing now. We're kind of pigeonholing that, that current access route. What we are proposing to do is maintain the existing circulation path from Freshman Hill to the north and crossing the Fifteenth Street pedestrian bridge and supplementing that with a new ADA accessible path along Fountain Road with an ADA curb ramp, a crosswalk to connect to the sidewalk on the south side of Fountain Road. It would provide a second, you know, additional access to the main campus. So that's something that, that we heard about and clear. This next plan shows kind of an overview of a couple of the action items we had. One is connecting again, kind of where my cursor is here, connecting the upper parking lot with an ADA accessible path with an ADA curb ramp, crosswalk that you can't see other people now, apologize. But that would connect to the south, sorry, the sidewalk on the south side of Fountain Road. The next item that was suggested was a more defined connection from the multi-purpose sport court area down the hill to connect to the new pavilion. And that's what we're showing here, the new concrete sidewalk, a new concrete staircase and a little, you know, nicer landscape plaza area at the bottom of the hill. And so this zoomed in plan shows the sport court with the start of that concrete walk that I mentioned down to the pavilion site. And then again, a connection, continuation of that down to the valley side. The next item was including a bike rack at both locations. I think that was a really good idea. And so on this site, at that plaza area, kind of the intersection of the pavilion site and the sport court site, we're showing a six-rack bike rack in this location where my cursor is now. And then on the Sunset Terrace side, we'll get there in a moment. This is where we're showing a bike rack. I've got that kind of pretty close to them. The support building with restaurants and storage. Kind of backing up to Freshman Hill, another comment was providing a drinking fountain. And so we are showing one. See underneath my cursor here, which on the drinking fountain attached to the exterior of the building. And then at the Sunset Terrace site, we're showing one on the west side. So southwest corner of the, of the building. Let's see. Also on Sunset Terrace, you asked for at least that us to consider a wider sidewalk along Sunset Terrace. So we increased all the sidewalks to six foot from five feet. That was a, a good idea based on the anticipated increased usage there. So we incorporated that. And then the landscaping plan on Sunset Terrace, we made a number of what I believe are, you know, improvements to the landscape plan. First of all, creating one, we really had bare bones landscape of Sunset Terrace. We kind of had more defined down at the freshman hill. But we did incorporate some, some hardscape. We extended the campus standard stone paper patio out on the west face of the, of the pavilion. And then provided some kind of low ground cover plantings with some, the two landscape boulders. And then on the south side and north side, we're showing some larger pine trees to kind of round out that, that facility. Then lastly, I think kind of the, the big takeaway that we got is kind of more architectural aesthetics of the pavilion, you know, roof line itself. And so if you remember, we had a gable roof. And that maybe didn't highlight the outlook that the campus and maybe yourself were looking for. So we did show a refined shed roof, which starts kind of high on the front, called the front base of the pavilion. And then slopes, single, single slope back toward the, the back of the building. And that really opens up that front base, especially on the Sunset Terrace site where we have that, you know, hopefully beautiful view looking into the, the valley. One thing that we noticed when we did make that change is that it really exposed the front base of the roof lines. It was really tall and to, to kind of soften or minimize that, the effect of that, we are showing, I'm proposing some decorative fascia panels. The number third of that increased roof line. And you can kind of see again in this photo, and this is the, the front elevation of what those fascia panels would be. We're thinking of a decorative metal perforated fascia board with maybe some opportunities for, for backlighting. And also to again, minimize and soften that, that look. And then we updated the renderings. This is down at Freshman Hill. You can kind of see the single span shed roof look, the decorative metal fascia panel. And obviously these can be, you know, updated with any kind of graphic that the school may want. We're just kind of showing something as a placeholder for now. But you can kind of see the amphitheater style seating on the, on the east side. And then that connection up to the sport courts on the left-hand side of the page here. It's some plantings, some screens. The softball batting cages here, not shown for, for reasons, but we are apparently showing some screens. Offer that for this. And then up at Sunset Terrace, very similar to what I described. Or some kind of low ground cover landscape plantings and some extended stone paper patio to set up, pat around their chairs. Kind of enjoy that space a little more. And then some larger pine trees. And you can see we're kind of trying to incorporate some of that, that natural look for the, for the tree graphics on the fascia panels. So that's the first view and then kind of just to, just to round it out, a view from this, from the northwest looking down at that building. Those were the major changes. Made some minor speeches to kind of dampen the plants. I think Eric shared that with you all. See, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, certainly willing to take any questions right now.
Thank you. Think what we will do is open, open this part of the meeting to public comment for the record before we hear from commissioners. So is there anyone from the public, either in this room or on the Zoom call, who would like to offer comments on this application? None? Eric, do I need to close public comments on this application?
Yeah, you could make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. I will be close public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Public comment is closed. And don't you, you commissioners have any comments or questions for the application?
Like what you did, I think, but that's with it. My only question or comment, Eric. Oh, sorry. I like what you did. And my only comment or question was, are there going to be chairs or some kind of seating that's there on a permanent basis?
I, I think I'll kind of defer to Rob and Charlie. I, I assume they'll have them out there on a day and maybe not on a regular basis, just for, they go. Any thoughts on maybe permanent benches or that or other church? We will have, surrounding the student union, we have a series of red and black.
I'm Charlie Potts, I'm the director of the student union at RPI. This is affiliated with the. Around the student union, we have a lot of deck space. And on those decks, we have black and red perforated picket tables and round tables and that type of thing. We imagine replicating that at this site. One caveat is that because it's so far away from the center of campus, we'll probably take special security precautions so they don't walk away, you know, they're ready. But they are attractive. So yes, there would be permanent seating underneath there. And we realize that there might be some cold months where it isn't used. It's more likely that we just leave them there for the security.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I mean, the first thing that sticks out to me, it's great that you guys are making the sidewalk connection, but it is crossing the street twice. Which feels like you're trying to get away from building the sidewalk on the north side of the road where it's really needed. So that's, I can speak to that, please? Yeah, I definitely can. So we, we certainly looked at that. The issue is that there's very little room to actually build the sidewalk on the north side. It looks like it's about like six and a half feet between the softball field and the curb. Yeah, it's, it's very, it's very tight there. And there is definitely a slow change between that corner of the outfield fence and softball. There'll be a lot of field fence and, and Fountain Road. And so we, we did try to, you know, make the connection as quickly as possible. And with space restrictions made it difficult to incorporate that on the north side. Yeah, if, if, you know, if you're on the north side, you still have to, still have to cross Fifteenth Street or you just say that crossing of Fountain Road.
Right, but looking at the pedestrian route now, you'd go from the sport court across Fountain then back across Fountain and then toward Fifteenth.
Yeah, so you.
So you could, I guess, provide another better crossing across Fifteenth on the south side. That southwest corner.
You're talking here?
Yeah. Is that possible? Or is there existing infrastructure, existing they're all crossing on Fifteenth?
There's one part of the player house that's right down the road. It's fifty yards long, one of college.
Yeah, yeah.
There's one there and there's one.
So is there really no, no crossing at Fountain and Fifteenth now?
No, not a formal crosswalk.
Okay, I mean, that, that seems like an outstanding issue already then, given that it is intersection. That's the, you know, place that you're sending pedestrians now. So yeah, I think if, you know, that would be a better focus than sending them back across Fountain North so that they could cross Fifteenth.
So there is a defined crosswalk at that, where that arrow is right now, because there's a path that actually goes through the.
My name is Rob Cram, the director of the county of San Diego. That, yeah, this new arrow, there's actually a crosswalk there right now that actually connected when we built the, the IOTech building. So there's on the pedestrian path that goes all in front of the, I think it's the north side of IOTech. So at that point there, they actually put a crosswalk that goes over to, I guess, the west, east side of Fifteenth Street. But it doesn't really connect there, correct? There's a crosswalk in thirty pairs just being connected. Simple, simple.
Yeah, you know, I'm just trying to think from a student perspective, you're going from, I don't know, the campus as well as probably most of you. But, you know, if you're going from this work for, and you're trying to get to some of the classrooms west of Fifteenth Street, you know, where is the student really going to cross? So are they going to go back across, sorry, back across Fountain and then cross Fifteenth? Or are they going to cross at Fountain Fifteenth?
I mean, I, I, I went to RPI a while ago.
And from Freshman Hill, pretty much everybody's going to go across Fifteenth Street pedestrian bridge. So that's still going to be where ninety percent of people go. I think what we're trying to do here is add a secondary supplemental path to make that connection without, without, you know, building a sidewalk along the north side of Fountain Road because there's already one on the south side. So we're kind of trying to use some efficiencies here as best we can. I, I, I totally understand what you're saying. Yeah, I think, I think it's just like only ten to twenty percent max would kind of use that cell.
Well, and I get your point about what it used to be like, like just a few years ago. But with this new traffic generator in this work part, because this work part is going to be exciting and new and hopefully highly utilized, you know. I guess what is tricky for, for us and from our perspective is if this were a regular, a new development, right? That, that sidewalk would be required north of Fountain. Absolutely, one hundred percent. And so it's tricky to, you know, I, I get that there is a, a pinch point there between the fencing, but six and a half feet or so, six, even six feet, like you could still fit an ADA accessible, yeah, long way there.
Yeah, you could make it, you could make it work.
Yeah, or, or create a, you know, a nice crosswalk across that, at Fountain and Fifteenth. You know, I think either way, we know, you know, for that ten or twenty percent of, of students, you know, that's, that's not enough.
Sure, sure.
We, we do know that, you know, pedestrian safety, micro mobility safety on campus could be improved. So I'll leave it at that. Another point was just that the crosswalk up on the sunset, the, what's being shown, the diagonal hatching doesn't match the or C six zero one or something like that, whatever the detail was for the crosswalk. Those are particular hatching. So, okay, just clarifying what you're going to use. I noticed that there are a lot of white pines and I don't have anything personally against white pines. But if, if something does start to impact them, which does happen to tree species, it would be nice to see some diversity amongst those. I think that's probably. And, and the other changes are, are, are great. I do, we really like to see this.
I think my, my comments will pretty much be ditto what James outlined. I would just only add that the, the intersection of Fifteenth and Fountain is not awesome. So like, I feel like what's, what's like, why, I mean, it's, it's a very spacious intersection. The, the, the curb radii are not, are pretty wide. So, I mean, why not like take this opportunity to narrow that down? You know, shrink the, the radii and just make that, make that a more pleasant place to, to cross. Then I, I'm a little, if we do that, then I'm a little bit more diagnostic as to whether or not we put the facility on the north side. If that becomes a more, an easier, more place to cross in general, then I, I would be, I'd be less inclined to, you know, demand of the north side. But, but also, I mean, Fountain is, is not the widest street on, in the world. But I mean, I do think you could get creative as, you know, possibly putting something in the, in the road bed if, if that's a street that is controlled by the university. I'm not sure exactly who owns their.
The city?
Okay, well, possi- possibly an opportunity to be creative there as well if the city also goes along with that. So just, just a suggestion.
I'm going to jump in and share that I did this little exercise in Google Maps and traced Campus Proper. And there's a sidewalk lining the entire perimeter of Campus Proper except right here at Fountain. It's feeling like you need to put a sidewalk in there. And it's not just students, right? Families, like I, I remember and, and still see, if there's a big baseball game, there's, there's some families there, right? So a little more effort and close up that little leak that exists on the campus plan. I agree, great improvement. Thank you. It looks beautiful. I have one question and that is, what is that very short wall, dark, it looks like a dark wall.
Oh, yeah.
On a concept.
Yeah, so that's actually a retaining wall too, because it doesn't really show it in this three D perspective because three perspectives are not reality. Sunset Terrace is from, I want to say three feet lower than the elevation of the concrete pad and the pavilion itself. So we, we do have to make up some grade around this.
So you're just doing a one in twenty or even less path to get up there? Okay, what's that material? Just curious.
This is the, of the wall itself.
Yeah.
The wall would be like a modular block stone wall, what we were thinking.
Okay. It kind of works with the CMU of the, of the building.
We would try to match it to that stone familiar in the building. Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other comment?
I just checked my own set. Looks like on the plan, on the north end of the Sunset Terrace site, there wasn't a tactical warning ship. There was one on the south side, I believe, but it looks like it was missing from there.
Okay, let's see, at the crosswalk itself, I believe it was at the transition to the parking area. Oh, out here? Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, I'll take it later that way.
And then I see the stairs on the, what are you, what are you calling the sports complex? One again, the sport court, sport court.
Yeah.
I see the stairs over there and is, is that great? Just too big of a change for?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, it would require probably three switchbacks and we really didn't want to think students go down three switchbacks if they could just incorporate a stair kind of a straighter shot. Right.
Mind showing, pulling that up on your screen for us?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Sorry about that. Let's see, so that's this one here. So here, let me go back to this one here. So there, I won't, I don't know the exact rate change from the sport court down to the pavilion, but it's, if I had to guess, it's eight to ten feet or more, which times twenty would require about two hundred linear feet of, you know, of path. And there's really, this is probably only fifty or sixty feet. So I'm just guessing it'd probably take three switchbacks, not more. It just seems like a kind of a silly way to get from one elevation to the other. We talked about what material we build that staircase out of. There is a wood staircase over here, but that wood staircase is also kind of on its last couple legs. So I think my recommendation to the, to the school, and I think they agree, is to go with a concrete or a more formidable, longer lasting staircase. Yeah, thank you guys.
The, the last thing I'll add then is, is just, you know, looking at that with the accessibility runs on is, you know, what, what is there, is the accessible route, like, you know, is going from the sport court, the east side of the sport court, through the parking lot on this new sidewalk that we've been talking about? And then there's, is there, there'd be another connection going north with that? I'm not expecting you to answer this right now, but if you just look into it and be able to answer that at the next, the next meeting, I think that would be helpful. Just so that we know it's explored and seen what the possibilities, but yeah, we'll do.
For her comment. Thank you. We have no further comments. Thank you. I am going to ask Eric to remind me twenty minutes later. We are, this application is a type two classification under seeker and therefore we do not need to declare ourselves and therefore.
Therefore, last meeting, you guys have declared the application complete.
Yeah.
And therefore this meeting, you have the opportunity to issue an approval.
Okay, thank you very much, Eric. Do any of the commissioners have an interest in making a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion on being tabled to the next meeting. We're looking for those, those changes, specifically the pedestrian access. Makes minor landscaping points, but if there's anything else that commissioners want to emphasize that we see updated.
Just as the accessibility is, is kind of coming top of mind.
So I think as long as that's addressed in the next meeting, we can move forward. Thank you very much.
I'll second your, your motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Let us, let us vote. Suzanne?
Yes.
Yes.
And yeah, thank you. We have one item, we have two items of new business. The first is that fifteen northern ride. The applicant is, I'm just going to read the letters in the acronym F R M I B A L L C. And this is PLTC 2023 0044. If you would kindly present your proposal to us.
Is this there? Oh, yes, server? Server, that's okay. We'll just, I can, like, yeah.
I'm Max Free, Troy resident and founder, principal, owner, manager of LLC, Bermuda LLC, doing business in Sual. Yeah, looking for sixteen more than drive. I'm going to start with the agenda item where I think what I sent. Yeah, looking for sixty more than drive. Uh, I'm gonna start with the agenda item where I think what I sent in was a little garbage. We are inspiring adult abuse cannabis license. Um, so I'm gonna get a little bit down in the weeds about different license types because it's relevant here. At the core of our operation, though, it is processing. So what is cannabis processing in New York's regulatory department? Um, it is essentially anything in between the steps of cultivation, which is a separate license type that we're not gonna go for. And the retail establishments that will be buying product from us via distributor. So anything from as simple as bagging up flowers, which are the most common consumer products. About fifty percent of the market is just that, up to, you know, more processed products, tinctures, edibles, um, salads. Braxis, we get into some of that, so those are our, those are the primary thing. Be doing on a day to day basis, so. Right here, this is, this is kind of an exemplar of our main operation here, a little jar of extract of.
Man, man, it, I'm sorry to interrupt, so is this an industrial occupancy?
So the two uses that, um, well, I and the issues that are the planning staff have. Included are the most appropriate descriptors of what happens here that are in the table of uses for Detroit. Are a research and development lab and craft manufacturing. Um, crap, if I had to pick one of those, it would be craft manufacturing, but um, it's partly the scale and uh, sort of the hands on nature of the operation. That gives it that craft nature. It's like an established term in the industry for the sort of smaller batches of. So um, there are a number of technical issues with actually doing that. They primarily revolve around the choice of solvents. Um, so. So this is a schematic depiction of primary extraction that is sort of the main event in terms of what we're doing on a day to day basis. To make our money, um, and there are a couple of different choices of solvent and different approaches we can take. There's sort of manual processes that are. Really amount to a scaled up air press, um, there's ice water baths. And but there's ethanol, which is better for sort of bulk operations, and there's this which sort of defines the safety and technical parameters. That we need to deal with from a regulatory standpoint, and just because uh, it's gonna be sort of taking the main role in our operation. So the solvents of choice are butane and propane, uh, they're instrument grade, so it's just. Very similar to what you see sort of in tanks outside the grocery store, but at a higher grade, a specialized instrument grade for vendor. Then we can do additional verification offsite of the sochi's. Um, so starting over on the left with. So starting with um, and all this is happening within a closed system. That's really what makes our operation distinct from. The illicit markets and the history that's here where people were. Conducting this, a form of this process that simply uses butane ones and just releases it out into the open atmosphere, everything that's used. You know, wherever it's gonna go out of that way. So within this closed system, we start with a a tank of chill pressurized solvent. Uh, you can use butane propane or a mix thereof. Um, and then that is allowed to flow into this column, which has already been packed with whatever cannabis biomass. Uh, it can be just flower, it can be sort of full plants that are frozen, uh, there's different approaches. It can be trimmed waste from. Sort of the processing of people's regular everyday flower. That chilled solvent flows down over and immerses all of that plant biomass. It's allowed to rest for, you know, a few seconds to a few minutes, and then drained off, leaving uh, sort of dried out uh, plant residue behind. That solvent, which is now full of cannabinoids, terpenes, which are sort of the fragrance compounds. And some plant waxes, but all the sort of oily components that hurt in the flower, individual collection vessel. Uh, I don't like the, that they put a plane here. It's representing heat, but in fact, this there's no, there shouldn't be any open flame. This is a gentle amount of heat. Not very much, you know, you really don't wanna go. Higher, the your terpenes that you've gone preserve will start to break down, even though like seventy, seventy five Fahrenheit, so you're really trying to keep a very small amount of heat. Uh, but that said, it is generally heat, especially compared to like negative thirty Celsius, if you're solving less poor, along with a specialized vacuum. That's drawn off the solvent, so that your solvent then goes back in the collection area and the vast majority of it is recycled. Meanwhile, this collection vessel has been almost entirely evacuated, except for that remaining oil in the body. That's all closed off, the oils removed, and stays in that specialized environment where butane and propane could be released. To continue to off gas, there's specialized vacuum elements that would be further dried, but butane and propane out, so they don't make a fire problem. And then further along the line, so then there's um. This is a primary product in itself. It can be packaged and sold as is after it's tested. And it can go into any sort of derivative product that may also be made, not in this environment necessarily, but in a GMP environment. Which is just a way of of the manufacturing practice. That's just the uh, we're not strictly FDA regulated, but the state is using the FDA standards. As the state's standards for manufacturing for a clean environment. It's essentially a pharmaceutical grade paper. So that, that that's where all the packaging operations happen, and uh, there took some examples here. Yeah, so this is one example of a machine commercial off the shelf. Um, there's an engineering certification for the machine itself. Then there's another engineering certification that occurs as the machine is actually installed in the space. Um, and then there's the environment that is actually conducted in. Um, this is just some representative stuff here. It's not actually how. Uh, we would lay things out, but essentially there's a specialized atmosphere designed for the possibility that. Something has gone catastrophically wrong, a gasket in the machine is completely fatal, the entire roughly twenty pound charge of butane and propane. Escapes into the room, and the safety standard is essentially that if some crazy person were smoking a cigarette at the time that that happened. Right next to the machine, it would still be sufficient ventilation for that not to cause a fire or other, you know, actual problem, and so. That there's a couple elements to that, um, there's a gas analyzer that's running continuously that is then connected to venting. Uh, special fans that can effectively do a, they have a number of air changes, but I can't remember how to do it, but uh, essentially can evacuate. The room at any time. There's also a way to accredit those fans. If you're doing something you know like you are, it's gonna release some amount of butane, like you're. You're about to actually disconnect the collection tank that's mostly but not entirely evacuated. You can, uh, there's like an alarm emergency evacuation. There's also a non-alarm evacuation. You can activate those fans in anticipation of opening some. Some smaller amount of.
I'm gonna ask you to pause just for.
That's a lot.
This is fascinating, and I think it's really, it it is relevant for us to understand the nature of. The project because it's new, at least for Troy. Can we proceed with understanding what your? Your does your development proposal is, because I think that could generate questions that bring us back to. The technical content of your presentation.
Absolutely, okay. Please redirect me, Adam. Um, there's also, there's gonna be. Yeah, we can do the site plan. There's some stuff about the license types and seeker that we'll get into, but let's do the site first and then we'll talk about that. So, um.
Hi, I'm Adam Vitello. I'm the architect of the project, um. And what we've got for us right now is kind of what I would call a schematic design for the site. Uh, essentially, it's a project comprised of shipping containers. Essentially. Playing off of the, the majority of the kind of the laboratory is a prefabricated. Kind of lab that comes with a shipping container. Uh, so there would be a number of these that would be connected on site, both prefabricated ones. As well as ones that would be fabricated, not necessarily by the laboratory manufacturers themselves, but by onsite contractors or offsite contractors and things like that. Given the site plan itself, we've uh. Security is an issue, uh, which Max can talk about. That is very funny. Um, so we've got uh, ideas about perimeter fencing and things like that uh, to to discuss. Um, but generally speaking, it's it's one container tall throughout the site. There's a series of. Six total containers, four of them are forty foot containers, two of them are twenty foot containers. Uh, there's some kind of containers comprising of office space, a clean room, a place to change and a bathroom, but then it kind of connects the laboratory. Uh, part of it, and from the lab you would move to a. Like a storage kind of product distribution spot. I think it's important to note that this is not a a public walk up. Spensary or anything like that. It's meant for kind of business to business. Um, we've also got uh, within the perimeter fencing at the bottom. Uh, I don't know if you can see there, you can see there's there's kind of staging for a truck to be able to pull in. Uh, open the gate, drive in, close the gate, and then and then um, participate in strap offs, deliveries, uh, things like that. The container at the bottom of the site is uh, at this point, just kind of a storage container. I'm not sure if it's gonna be insulated or not, but that would be not really a habitable one to be tempted for. Products coming in and out, things like that. Um, the site right now is is completely vacant. Uh, I think it's been a number of things, including potentially a gas station. Maybe there's also a. An outpatient clinic or something on there, I'm not sure, but there's nothing, nothing really remaining, but kind of what looks like an old foundation or pad or something, I'm not sure. Uh, I'm not very confident that maybe that's actually usable, uh, but what we've done is we've pushed the majority of the building up as close to the setback as we can. And uh, kind of offered parking uh, off of the more minor street and. As well as the delivery route, so we're not pulling in off of Northern Drive, off of Northern Drive and then off of the side street is the site. Uh, we've shown, let's see. Five parking spaces, uh, as well as a spot for the truck to kind of stage as it goes in and out. We've got, um, if it helps, we've got some very, very preliminary kind of three D views that should be. Looked at mostly just to help illustrate kind of the concept as opposed to many specifics. So hopefully it's kind of visible on the screen, I'm not sure. But you can see kind of the the staking aspect of the containers, which is due in part uh. Kind of the required separations between uses, as well as just kind of the the flow of uh, manufacturing, if you will, and. What we have tried to be, see the perimeter fence, uh, we've got some other ideas about what that could be. There's a security aspect of this as well, which Max can talk about. Uh, beyond just the truck, but the the site itself. Uh, but you can see at the front of the site here, the we are proposing at this moment that the container actually kind of breaks the fence and. That could kind of offer uh, like a street frontage of the project. The layout of the containers is somewhat contingent on the laboratory itself, so there's kind of interior factors that you can kind of flesh out before we can. Fully understand where windows can and can't go, uh, but the windows also uh, tie into the security aspect, so I'm not sure that windows would be. Able to happen on the kind of the street side of the project, but we've discussed um, kind of casually, this could be a spot for um, a mural or something else. With that. Uh, to kind of, um, you know, break up the relentlessness of kind of security. Um, we haven't really touched on any colors or um, nailed down too much, anything about site materials and. Things like that. The containers themselves would need to be on some sort of cross protected foundation, um. At this point, my experience, I've done a number of shipping container projects, most of them end up uh, kind of living on crawl spaces. It just makes kind of running utilities and things a lot easier. Um, we haven't gotten into that's also of what what things are gonna be sitting on, yeah.
Thank you. Eric, we determined this is the question that uh, the required amount of parking is being provided. At this facility.
Yeah, the the um, uh. There's a maximum amount of five parking spaces that you can have along the street. And uh, so I think there's four or, oh, we've provided five, yeah.
Okay.
Or within there.
Sorry, is there one image that would be best to sleep up there?
That's fine.
That's fine, thank you. Yep, yep, um. I have some thoughts, but let me invite other commissioners to share their thoughts and ask questions. Uh, as I understand it, we are, we are not looking to make any decisions. We cannot make any decisions this evening. But we're gathering information and offering guidance to you so that when you come back uh, before us, we can start that formal process. Uh, with that, let's share our initial thoughts.
Not not to interrupt, but I think if you've got things related specifically to the security, I think that might be good to. And address all at one time, because I know Max would be able to answer all those questions.
Uh, and just before that, there is a a secret determination, uh, requirement, one requirement from the state. To apply for the license type that we would prefer to have is to have and uh, to have the decision is that permanent control, which means an executive lease. This is a local development corporation of home property, and in order to, that is a like a secret eligible determination, the sign of these. So with the planning commission and the P D agency, um, we, I would hope, like, we're gonna make this application window, and tonight we need to. Make this secret determination tonight. I believe we are exempt. Uh, under six one seven point five C nine, unless municipalities chose in a different list of type two actions. Uh, we this falls under non-residential, under four thousand square meters, but that's something. So. You notice I have security, um, it's a little vague, as many things in the regulations provided by the state regarding cannabis bar. Um, but there's a requirement for a security perimeter, um. This word is used, but essentially that's defensible, um, so what does that mean? We're basically going off of two things. One is that there is clear guidance for cultivation, outdoor cultivation, which is a minimum six foot height. Um, in other jurisdictions, uh, there is other elements besides fencing, um. Uh, video monitoring with a twenty four seven third party monitoring contract, uh, physical sightlines. So one issue, one issue with this rendering is it's uh, showing trees here, which I don't think we're gonna be allowed to provide. Because any, any kind of foliage that provides a potential hiding place for a person to conceal themselves is essentially not permitted. Uh, in other jurisdictions. So it doesn't necessarily have to be just grab. There's potential for like a pollinator friendly mowing schedule, or you only mow it down like twice or even just. Once a year, so certain things can grow, but we are pretty limited in what we can permit in terms of foliage on the site. This tree is existing, and I don't think it really provides much of an obstruction to sideline that we provide additional cameras. I'm trying to preserve the tree. There's only one tree on the site in like the one corner that wasn't paved over, and I'm fighting for it. Um, so that's most of what we know. Oh, and then the other main requirement is, um, the fencing has to be over. Because we need to prevent uh, like pedestrians from essentially casing the place and determining like. Are there rhythms when we're opening the doors, when we're accepting deliveries? Some of that we can't conceal, but what we can conceal in terms of. Product moving around the site, we have an allocation to this. So that has some effect on our fencing choices. Um, these are some sort of base things that I'm looking at, just to avoid the like. Chain link barbed wire fence, like the plastic green stuff in it, kind of construction in site slash prison effects. And try to moderate some of these security mandated security measures into something that looks better. Um, so I sort of like this effect. This is being done with foliage, but this really represents sort of the visual that I think we should be going for and trying to. Achieve all these goals at once, where there is a metal fence, it's sufficiently high, and so, hey. But unlike this, we're normally demonstration photo I could find of like a sheet material that could obstruct the view. This is on the exterior, purposely showing you like an exterior side, whereas I think this would be better off if the. Sheen were behind, and so it's really the character, sort of a nicer looking black metal fence. Um, and then I wish I had a clear answer of like, you know, we have to have a uh, fence this tall. My understanding, I've talked with some of my operational people, business partners that have experience in other markets, is you can go look, go below eight. Problem is, if you go below eight feet in height, you have to add like your barbed wire, concertina wire, some kind of. Physical sharp deterrent barrier to substitute for it. And I really don't think that's like a better look than something like this, where you know, it is spiky on top of it, it's. Fits in with the fence. It doesn't actually look like the Brentser County Jail or something like that. Um, and that also is an issue with this rendering here, so one thing that is sort of a a moving. Issue currently is this breach in the fence line. Issue currently is this breach in the fence line. So it also relates to an issue we're gonna have to go for the DPA for. Currently, this design is under the minimum height. A second container in height would bring us up above it. I'm just not sure, I'm gonna have to ask the DPA, like, do we really feel like it's gonna improve the character of the neighborhood to take this sort of wall? And make it twice as high as it would be otherwise, like, is that really sort of the intent? That makes the most sense for everybody. I mean, we can do it, we can go up in height there, but like, is that really what? You know, is best for the neighbor, neighborhood and everyone. And so the issue with this rendering is. It's not depicting, if this is something that is not just a fence, but an actual flat surface. That someone could potentially like put a ladder up against and come over or like back a truck up against and go over. If it's only this single height and it also comes through the fence, I think at a minimum we'd be required to add, again. Concertina wire, barbed wire, another kind of sort of visible, physical threatening barrier. To account for that. So it's sort of the three options for dealing with that. One is, one is depicted here, but it's missing that. Obstruction, another is having the fence outside so that there's no breach being made by the building and the others don't have the height. Uh, and I don't personally care. I mean, I need any of those three options for for me. Uh, it's really a question, what we all think is the best for the neighborhood. Um, so that's it for security. Yeah, I think we did the question, and if there's more stuff to come up about. Uh, about security.
Well, thank you for insisting upon talking about security first, because I think that's gonna generate some work on it.
We have to do. I don't know whether the questions were not on, um, I lost to understand why you want to put this at the end of Seventh Avenue, but Troy. And not someplace that's more industrial.
Um, because I live here, I live here in Troy and I have accumulated, you know, lists of zoning maps for many local municipalities. Um, but in searching around for. Zone like parcels in Troy that are available, uh that don't have sort of the dilapidated building already on them. Um, that are owned by either uh Troy IDA, Ransor County IDA, or Detroit Local Feltman Corporation, nobody private selling. So that's all I'm looking for, that's the second thing, two years I've been looking for. Um, this is the one that is the closest to ready to go and then has compatible zoning. There's also Water Street, we talked about that currently, uh, you know, I I heard, I don't wanna say. Selfish and sickening. I've heard that there are other plans for those parcels, once that remediation is done. Um. There's other like private landlords that own things that could potentially be peeled off, but you know, I haven't found anyone responsive. But essentially, you know, this is the um. The closest option for, you know, after the, before the change in zoning, there were very limited industrial areas. Um, especially ones that were already owned by an ITA or by the city. And after the zoning, that's really opened up a lot of cases for this sort of light industrial, lower intensity ground manufacturing.
Well, yeah, I I I asked this question because. In trying to figure out where you were and went on Google Earth and. And looked at the images of Seventh Avenue and your your neighbors with like little colonial houses. Um, which. Especially when they're talking about your security concern, I look at and say, well, this, this. Is a big change abusive Seventh Avenue and maybe it was a uh gas station at one point in time and maybe it was an office building. But something where you're uh creating security that, in your words, sort of looks like a prison. Um, feels like a huge change and it feels, it just feels out of place for that road. That that's the thought I had since we're having a conversation. It's when I looked at at your proposal, tried to understand it. And tried to get a sense of what it looked like and then we looked at what the rest of the community looked like. And it just. It all becomes out of.
That's the biggest weakness of the site, certainly, is that it does border residential. Um. It's part of the new zoning. I know there are a number of places where relatively high intensity zoning now abuts directly with residential use. Or in some cases, in one of these neighbors, uh it is a residential house like any other, but it's under the misuse to zoning that would support. Much more intensive uses than it is now. So, yeah, it is, it's a pretty dramatic change that's been implemented by the city.
So with with that, I mean, it's, it's quite different for Seven, but for Northern Drive, which is the main, they're out there. You know, this is the kind of thing that. Can go on that site and can, you know, it also, it also speaks to having real. Commercial uses, industrial uses where people could work and live in the same community. So I think there's a lot of value to having it. You know, that that said, I think there are things you can do to buffer it a little bit better with your neighbors than having, you know, the shipping container. Ten feet or so from their, from their home. And I think you could orient, I like that the the vehicle ingress, egress is on Seventh uh to avoid the traffic conflicts that might be there on Northern. Uh, but I think you could, um. I mean, it's, it's, looks like shipping containers is. Is turning them, gonna solve the problem, and I don't think so, but I think you could orient it a little bit more, a little more like a traditional. Commercial or industrial use uh towards, towards Northern Drive. I think overall. That is one of the things that sticks out to me is it has this very unique. Um, intense, you know, kind of cold feeling to it. And the more you can make it blend in and look like just another building, in some cases, might help. That's not to say, you know, don't do anything unique or don't do anything sensible. I think there's a lot of uh good thought that's been put into this, but. Um, I think this is gonna be kind of a head turner if this was built as is and, you know, it sounds like that's not what you want. What you want is. To not attract attention. Um, one of the the biggest things is just, you know, we talked about, somebody mentioned parking and. You know, you have five parking spaces here, which are. You know, eliminating, what, three on-street parking spaces? So you're like netting two?
No, because there are existing, there's existing curb cut already, so uh I don't think we're opening up. Anymore than what is already present uh in terms of the Seven Ave. There's no parking on Northern Drive, so we are eliminating that curb cut, but we don't gain any parking by doing that.
Right.
But I. Wouldn't have thought that we're extending the pretty big curb cut that's already there, so I I don't know that we're necessarily limited. Any existing parking spaces on Seventh.
I'm just saying, if, you know, in this case, right, you build something there. You have people coming, how many, how many employees are are?
Yeah, it inside of the time, yeah, it could, but it could be up to ten or twelve.
Oh, it could be.
So we, you know, there's a couple of different elements for uh coping with that. One is that the main north-south line through Troy are actually quite宽, it's like a two-tenths of a mile long. So a little bit of a walk, but not too far and not too much of a climb. Um, biking is an option. Um, there's also, you know, local, plenty of people living locally, the entrance to Corliss Park is like a hundred or twenty yards away.
It's quite close to the Ocean Trail as well.
Yeah.
My point in having this perpendicular parking, parking, which is, in my opinion, out of character with the neighborhood and and does. Uh, create a conflict with the with pedestrians, that you're not actually gaining. That much usable parking space. If you had just on-street parking. You would still have probably three spaces in this space, in the same, the same frontage.
Yeah, that's probably correct. I mean, um, but short of pulling cars into the site, which, you know, interferes with. Uh, deliveries and things like that, um, this was the solution we were looking for.
What is the, there's never a part minimum though, right? I don't know, so you could have, you could just have on-street parking is my point. And not have to, first of all, use up all this space that you could have for greenery, you know, you mentioned wanting to eliminate the the concrete. You know, you could have that be green space with a sidewall, which is really what is needed here, I think.
This ties into something to another issue, but so first off, um, I haven't been a number of times, I've wanted to go a little more before I come into this. But when on my trips to view Seventh Avenue after six, six thirty P M, presumably most people, the neighborhood are there. That Seventh Avenue is well under fifty percent utilization for the existing street parking spaces. Until you get, uh, I don't remember what the next street to the south is, it does end up picking up and become more occupied. Once you prop that street and on that street itself, but there is like more park. Parking there than I could ever imagine employees being on site this.
Right.
So to speak, there were a couple of other issues that came up, one with the alignment. Uh, we actually, our first draft had a different alignment. Really trying to max, both maximize space and pull those industrial uses, manufacturing uses. Uh, away from not only the southern neighbor, but the eastern neighbor. Um, and if we would need a bearing, because in neighborhood two, there's a minimum frontage. Required, so we wouldn't have been fulfilling that with containers perpendicular up against the north side of the site. So, yes, it is possible to, you know, in theory, pull away from the eastern neighbor by. Returning, by using north-south avenues of Seventh Avenue to align the containers themselves. But the current, the current neighborhood, uh, neighborhood zoning doesn't permit us to do that without. Um, as far as differences, so that that's really the eastern neighbor is being, the distance. Uh, like the, we have a limited amount of distance between that eastern neighbor because of that issue, because we're required to occupy that much frontage. In terms of the southern neighbor, that southern border is not directly up against his house. There's a driveway also. So there's a driveway, there's this, you know, green space we're talking about, there's the storage site, uh, storage container or like other useless containers. And then there's uh the truck actually.
Can you share that foliage uh requirement? You know, you talked a little bit about the foliage.
It's not in the regulations specifically, this is stuff from all the other jurisdictions that have done that. Where like when they say, you know, provide a secure perimeter and environment, what they need, uh, there actually, I think there are specific references to preserving sightlines. I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, if you could just before, before you come back, if you can share that with us.
Yeah, it may not be there, like they may just say, you know, a security plan and that's when you reference to it, that's explicitly in the regulations. But in all the other jurisdictions that have done that, that's implying all of these things about.
I mean, my mind was like Thorne Brandle, it's like, it's like the the Venn diagram crossover of like. Hostile and green, you know, um.
One thing I've been trying, I've been wondering if it could work would be uh something or like a grapevine where it'll actually grow on the fence, but it doesn't actually provide. Like a bushy thing that is enough room to install it. That's really the key. Point on which things turn.
I have different opinion about that, but I I feel like they are very concealing, but anyway. Now to get to the the heat on that one, do you, do you, you, is it clear what I'm talking about for the parking layout?
Yes, okay.
Well, that that it could provide, like, there's a version. Yeah, yeah, no, so with less parking, um, the basically the whole thing could be pulled away from the eastern neighbor. So it really splits off two pro, like eliminate parking on site except for the truck, obviously, that's. That's sort of non-negotiable, but that's the interior of the perimeter anyway. But eliminating that, the the parallel parking allows us to sort of pull away, even create more space, but more clearance in particular between us and.
Right, we we just wanna also see five for minimum sidewalks as well.
Yeah, not like entire, yeah.
And I'll just go ahead and jump in since we're on the topic and and. Yeah, my my chief concerns are the the consistency and continued, the continuity. Um, of the of the sidewalk going up Seventh Avenue, um, as much as possible, if we can keep that intact and pedestrian friendly. Um, I like the ideas about. On the frontage on Northern, trying to make that as interesting, pleasant. As, you know, as as possible, if it meets with all the other regs, um, I would encourage that as well. Um, and and what that implies about like the various arrangements, I don't know, but um. Yeah, I mean, I I I like where you're thinking and and your flexibility of of how these things can kind of move around and all the various. Pieces fall into place, so. Um. Uh, yeah, just anything that we can do to soften that, that those trends, that transition, um, I I like the ideas. That you're supporting, uh, that you brought up, uh, on the type of fencing and and all of that kind of thing, I think that's great. Um, but if you're, if there's any other creative ideas and solutions, would I, I think we'd all be welcome, welcome to this.
One thing you're reminding me of is, um, this also doesn't depict anything being done with the roof, it's just the like sort of bare container effect. Um, and so there's other options, like there's an option for like a fascia layer up front to sort of remove the core gate. Um, that's one thing we could think about, but um, like a decorative roof line, something that really makes it more, I, we didn't bring any pictures of this, but. You know, Google Images is full of container projects, but really with that like mayor's steel can stack at the port effect. Eliminated face to the point that you really have to look closely to realize, oh, this is a structure that's created out of container, it's not like a standard. Kind of building. In terms of the pedestrian access, I think actually it it has to do partly with. The current grading of the site, there's, those curb cuts are quite steep, it's not really a great pedestrian crossing. For the sidewalk as it exists, because the site itself is like. Couple feet, maybe one or two feet higher in elevation, certainly to Northern Drive, it's actually, right now is a pretty significant dip down. But there's also like a descent onto Seventh that I would assume is not ADA compliant as currently is. Um, so it it may. Yeah, it it would get into having to do some more recreating of the site. Basically, the whole process of sort of submitting an initial design and coming to this point, uh, it started with us trying to use the existing slab. As poor condition as they're in, at least not doing extensive regrading. And then you sort of got pulled forward by the minimum frontage requirement, so. Uh, but yeah, it would, if what I'm saying is, it won't be hard for us to improve the current condition on the east side of Seventh Avenue in terms of.
Yes, yeah, I mean, and to your point, I mean, I think I can think of like several different examples in Berlin and a couple of other places that. Use shipping containers to. In ways that are like pretty inviting, so, yeah.
I'm not the easiest player, okay. Well, um, but though I do share Bill's concern about the character of the neighborhood. I can imagine that if you make it. If you make it beautiful and interesting. And you don't create noxious odors and. Sound. And. Vehicle ingress and egress all day long. That could actually be an interesting contributor to the neighborhood. A little mystery, I think that if you've got a neat foot high fence, you're not gonna see a lot of the shipping container. So it's a fun design study to figure out, do you wanna make the effort to make the containers more beautiful or make the fence more? Um, where you were landing, Max, yes, where you, the the last fence option that you showed us. That that really interesting picket was very pretty. Um. I thought, depending on what you put behind it. Yeah, I I mean, I think that's really cool, then. I I agree on the sidewalk a hundred percent. Let's just make it like this little mystery box on the corner. Um, but. Be ready to explain to us and the public about how. Not just the visual impact it has on the neighborhood, but all of those other things. Sound and smell and and activity and.
Yeah, we didn't talk about smell yet, um, and this gets into the various uses, so. Processing itself, it's quite easy to prevent odor from escaping, um, it's that part of what you'd wanna do to prevent volatile organics. From escaping anyway, because uh everything is filtered, use charcoal and permanganate, which is a chemical that will absorb those things. And you have a protocol for how frequent you're changing them, so odor can't really escape effectively from the processed air. Um, what does smell and really can't be remediated effectively because of the volume of moisture is full-scale cultivation. So the license type that we're going for, assuming we can get premises control, is the uh processor. And then supplementary distribution license and nursery license. So what does that mean? The distribution license is strictly for our own products. Anyone who shares those two is forbidden. By the regs from shipping any product for anyone else, so it's only things we have value added ourselves that are going to retailers. I've thought about trying to sort of come up and make some commitment about hours of operation for those trucks. The problem with that is we can't leave any product on the road at any time overnight or parked anywhere. So even though, you know, we'll send, if we were to send a. So even though, you know, we'll send, if we were to send a truck out with, uh, you know, Bill of Leyton or. Uh, the retailers that they're intending to go to that day in the city, presumably, that's where really the focus of the market is. Uh, if there's any reason they can't make that delivery, they have to take product back. Take it back here and unload it that same day. So, you know, if I'm going to send a truck down to the city, even if they live, even if they, they go out at seven or eight AM. By the time they've made their deliveries, it's going to be four, they're not going to be getting back here until sort of well after closed business. And we do need to preserve that ability to unload at that time. Um, the nursery, so, so if we're not able to get premises, a nursery is, um. Nursery is like a much smaller scale cultivation. You don't get the real, the issue with, um, is really ventilation of those mature plants. They're transpiring, they're pulling water up through their roots and releasing it into the air. And if you don't remove that moisture somehow in large volume, everything's going to get powdery mildew and have. So, but that's really an issue with mature plants. The nursery license is about immature plants. Uh, which A, don't smell as much, and B, you don't have that extremely high volume air change. You really have that oak event if you can't put everything through, if those are, if you're doing full-scale cultivation. So, um, there's a couple of ways the state could force us out of that, partly just by not issuing us a processing license. Partly if we're not able to get premises control before the close of this application window. The other license type that we can apply for that would cover these activities is a microbusiness license. Um, it's essentially the same with the ability to retail. And the requirement that any biomass that is processed more than five hundred pounds a year, we have to cultivate ourselves. But this site is really not compatible with cultivation, I think, partly, you know, the neighborhood is really the biggest reason. The space is another, it's just not appropriate to cultivate here, uh, and odor issues, you know, everything else. Um, so we have another site that we could use for cultivation in Southern Washington County that we would use in that. Um, and in retail, similar story, there's really not enough space here to have our secure perimeter. And have retail option that is realistic. It's not really an ideal neighborhood for retail. Uh, we're limited by distance from our cultivation site, so even though this. It's a twenty-five mile radius from cult, as microbusiness, it's twenty-five mile radius from your cultivation site where your retailer is permitted. This northern drive site does allow it, but really, you know, if you want to do retail, you would have to like. Rent some space in the family dollar block down the street or open up in Saratoga or something else. I don't really envision us being able to combine. Either retail or cultivation with this site at any time. Uh, but that's, that's sort of the, and advantage of microbusiness license, premise control. Uh, but that, that covers also like that's, those are rules that only apply to this initial licensing round. Uh, we're in it for the long haul, so miss out on that licensing round, where there's only a few licenses, you know, get them. But those are, that's like the big picture of the things the state could make us do somewhere.
Thank you. What a lesson.
But there's much more.
Yeah, I'm saturated, um. So I, I, I will say that, uh. You came very prepared to educate us. I think you've done a wonderful job. I think. That with this background information, we will be poised to act. When you develop your, your proposal in more detail. Um, I. It is my thought that without a more detailed proposal. I don't think that we can act on seeker. Because of the character of the community, and that is one. That's one checkbox that I don't necessarily agree with in, uh, in the short form. But I will ask Eric if we're able to declare ourselves the agency at this time.
Yes, that is a, that's an option that you have.
Do we have to, um, open our schedule of public comment? We need to schedule that.
Well, they need to provide.
We need a, we need a complete application first, alright, thank you. We always appreciate that.
Yeah, hi, hi, it's, it's my understanding that we're still awaiting some. Uh, necessary details of the application such as a landscaping plan and a lighting plan. Uh, provided Eric confirms that's still the case, I don't think you can declare the application complete this evening.
Agreed, thank you.
Right, which is the difference between this, this schedule.
As, as a concerned seeker, um, I mean, it's my first seeker, so please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that, um, we are actually, as a type two action. It would not really be, uh, it, the, the sort of environmental assessment forms actually are not required. Nor is like public comment or many, many of the other aspects. Um, so there certainly is enough here to demonstrate that the square footage, that it falls under that exemption.
And you said there's a concern on the timeline for your secret determination?
Yes, so we're not able to, uh, the TLBC is not permitted to advance issuing us a lease, which is required for this application window. For December eighteen.
Sarah, I think, uh, I get your, your point, I think. But with that said, I think we could still do our, our job in addressing the neighborhood concerns.
Can, can I just weigh in on the seeker? I, 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 I don't necessarily agree that it's type two. It may be. Um, I, I think it's properly classified as a light industrial use. Which would require a special use permit, which may take it out of the type two list. Um, but that may not be the case. If it is type two, there's nothing you can do for them, other than declare it type two. So you don't, you don't neg deck a type two action. If it, if it is indeed type two, they don't need anything from you pertaining to seeker. Um, if it is an unlisted action, I don't think you can take action this evening because. How would you determine there's no potential for adverse impacts if you don't even have a complete application? So, I, 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 I think if the applicant can demonstrate to staff that it is indeed. Uh, a matter that falls within the type two list, they wouldn't need anything further from you anyway, and staff can confirm that to them.
Thank you, Andy. If indeed it's a type two, there's no need for us to even declare ourselves lead agency or anyone to do so.
It, 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 it's a, it's a type two action, um, so technically you could declare lead agency, then determine it's type two, no further actions required. But, but staff can handle that as well.
I see no reason to declare ourselves lead agency.
Yeah, uh, the only reason was, uh, TLBC was expecting that, because that's typically the process for other actions, but that may only be. That, that may have been thinking that was based on assuming it wasn't type two.
And I think we were assuming that it was unlisted.
That was, that was what I drive gathered based on.
Okay, so I believe that the onus is on the applicant to convince the planning staff. That it is a type two action.
And that seems to turn on the question of, uh, the table of uses and whether it's light industrial or craft manufacturing and.
Uh, by definition, this falls under light industrial. Craft manufacturing wouldn't have fallen, um, well, it's in our, it's in our zone.
Yeah, like.
But, but, but you still, you still, even with a special use permit required, you still may fall under the type two list. I just can't confirm that for you this evening.
Yeah, we're running short on time too. I mean, the first app, like I said, the first application window, you know, we're still here for it, even if we're not able to make it in that first window. Uh, I just. Wasn't aware of this issue before tonight, and so I'm still hoping you can get everything in order that we would need to hopefully be ready to go in December. But yeah, it, it, it turns on the language of what is the definition of craft manufacturing, what is the definition of.
Correct.
Can you read that for you?
Yeah, please.
Industry craft, the craft industry encompasses goods that are generally handmade by artisans or those skilled in a particular trade. Although machinery may be used, small businesses engaged in the craft trade may include, but are not limited to art galleries. Handmade textiles, woodworking and culinary products. For purposes of this chapter, this shall also include the terms artisan industry. Versus light and industry light. Processing or manufacturing of finished products or parts from previously prepared products or parts. Provided that all processes are contained entirely within a fully enclosed building, including any heat, glare, dust, smoke, fumes, odors or vibration. Light industry may include the fabrication, assembly, treatment and packaging of said products. The manufacture of electronic instruments, preparation of food products and alcoholic beverages. Pharmaceutical manufacturing, research and scientific laboratories, and, and incidental storage, sales and distribution of said products.
Sort of sounds like another one directed up, that language about from previously created parts really is not, doesn't really accurately describe. But, you know, in art galleries either, so.
I would have to infer with the.
So, so, so Eric, while Eric was stalling by reading that for me, I was able to pull up the type two list. Um, a type two is construction of a primary non-residential structure or facility. Involving less than four thousand feet of gross floor area and not involving a change in zoning or a use variance. And consistent with local land use controls. So i- if you're less than four thousand square feet.
Yes.
I think you would meet that definition under type two. Which would give the board this evening the ability to declare themselves lead agency. And immediately determine it's a type two action, no further seeker review is required.
Andy, you said that, that. If there's a zoning variance, then that would nullify that?
Correct, i- 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 it, oh, it, four thousand square feet of gross floor area or less, non-residential facility. Not involving a change in zoning or a use variance. They're not requesting either one of those items. And consistent with local land use controls, and, and this is consistent, it's, it's allowable used by special use permit, so it's consistent. With local land use controls, so I, I, I think it meets that definition, which is found on a type two list.
Max, you at one point have mentioned variances, but you're not seeking one at this.
Area, area variance, not a use variance for the minimum height.
Okay, cool.
The, the only caveat, not to burst a bubble, I think we're getting in the, to the right place for you. But I'm unaware, and perhaps you could educate me, whether or not the new cannabis regulations. Uh, make any changes to seeker requirements or strengthen any review thresholds under seeker. I'm unaware of any, but I, but I would ask you if you are aware of it.
Not of any strengthening, uh, it is part of the requirements, uh, not only the New York State regulations, but also. Our arrangements with the local development corporation that everything, the licensing, uh, you know, the, the. How should I put it? But, uh, the successful execution and continuation of our agreements with the local development corporation. Is all contingent on all previously existing approval processes of seeker. Planning commission, anything that's required is still required. There's no exemption or, uh, you know, wiggling around it. Created as, as a result of regulations, but I'm not aware of any additional requirements beyond the licensing requirements that the state is administering. But in terms of, uh, local use, yeah, other than things I mentioned specifically, like additional requirements for features like that eight foot fence for outdoor cultivation. I'm not aware of anything in the regulations that, uh, like you said, you know, strengthens or otherwise alters. Uh, the seeker for local planning processes.
Perfect.
In that, in this location?
Yes, with a specialty use permit.
Okay.
So, so if I sum up where I think we are. Um, i- i- it's going to be processed as a light industrial use in the M two zone. Which is allowable by special use permit. And since it is construction of a non-residential structure with less than four thousand square feet of gross floor area. It would constitute a type two action under seeker, which gives you the ability to, uh, make the, declare yourself lead agency. And make the determination that it's a type two action, no further seeker review is required. I, I still don't think the application's complete though, because they still gotta get in the lighting plan and the landscaping, et cetera.
Thank you very much, Andy. So therefore, with regards to seeker lead agency, do I have a motion? All in favor? Do I have a motion with regard to the action type?
To declare that it is a. Type two action and then no, no more, uh, actions are required of us. I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No further seeker action is required.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table? This proposal until. A specific time?
I don't think that you need an official motion for that, given that this is a special bank conference and application and nothing is there.
Okay, thank you. Therefore, we will simply inform you that the next. Planning commission meeting will be held in January of twenty twenty-four. If you can find, uh, application deadline online. Do you have any questions about the feedback that we have provided on your, uh, sketch material?
No, thank you very much, and I look forward to seeing you in January.
Okay, thank you.
I have one very quick question. Let's slide first foray into the new, uh, open ended parking requirements. Um, so is the preference is actually that almost entirely on street parking? Or is it to minimize the threshold thus the disruption in sidewalks? So if we ended up with. Because of, uh, adjusting the site, um, five park spaces behind events inside that, is that necessarily a preference or not necessarily?
If, if you can fit off-street parking on site, I think that is fine, or, uh, I don't think that. You know, it depends on how it's done.
But the park is on-street parking in favor of a, a more convenient sidewalk and a, a cleaner threshold between the site and delivers.
And then I, I don't know if anybody else had mentioned this, but, you know, Eric did with a bunch of staff recommendations in there as well, when, when this is a more formal obligation. So just please make sure that, you know, those are addressed.
Are you sure it's that report, yes?
Oh, I think I actually got that.
Okay.
It was basically like, you know, we were about to provide more.
There were quite a few items, so if, Eric, if we can share that back report, I think it would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Wait, what is processing?
Okay, so our third and final key of business this evening is new business. That is TLPC twenty twenty-three zero zero four five one eighty-five Earl three. The applicant is Unity House and, uh, they have sent representatives to present the project. For which I must recuse myself, um. Due to Unity House being declined, so I will hand the chair to James Rapp. Please excuse me. Hey Eric, before we get started, would you mind pulling up our stake plans?
So while he's giving that setup today, everyone, my name is Courtney Davis, Pavella Associates, and here with me tonight is Greg O'Connor with Architecture Plus. We are representing Unity House, their teaching kitchen project at twenty eighty five Earl Street.
Uh, whoa, I'm sorry. Oh, you just recently sent in a new updated one.
Yes, but honestly, the only thing we changed was the zombie references, so the old one.
Alright.
Yep.
But.
Alright, so to give, start with a brief description, um, the Unity House is proposing renovating an existing abandoned residential building into dining space deserved for teaching purposes, as well as adding four hundred ninety five square foot additions to the rear of the building serve as a teaching kitchen. Since the site is so limited with the building encompassing most of the parcel, um, there are very minimal site features that we're going to be adding, uh, one of which is going to be a bike rack on the front side of the building, as well as replacing an existing concrete staircase. Uh, and then all utilities are gonna be connected out front of the building, and there are the available utilities in Earl Street. So we did receive your staff comments, Eric provided them to us, and we just wanted to address some of your concerns, the first one being zoning. So we did communicate with the planning department, and we are all on the same page now, I believe, that the zoning for the site makes use two and neighborhood three. Uh, so therefore, we actually don't need any of the variants we initially thought we needed, um, and all the plans and forms have been revised, and so anything submitted to you in the future could be correct in regards to that. Next item was landscaping, so again, since the site is so small relative to the side of the, side of the building, um, there's not too much room to add any additional landscaping, but any of the area behind the building, which I think is only about nine to ten feet, uh, we will restore that area to want, and we are conserving and protecting two large mature trees located to the rear of the site. Moving on to lighting, uh, we don't have any freestanding light fixtures proposed as part of this project, but in discussions with Architecture Plus, we may provide, um, one, one or two small building mountain lights that may be in the area of the door. Uh, moving on to garbage, uh, we don't anticipate any need for any large dumpsters, it'll likely just be your typical side of the road can. Um. Then. For parking, we're not proposing any parking, again, because of the site restraints, um, if parking is needed, there is a Unity House large parking lot across the street. We believe that the hours of this facility will be in the evening, so it shouldn't really overlap with Unity House's regular business hours, and therefore there should be plenty of parking available. In addition, we really expect a lot of the community to access the site via foot, bike, and/or through the local public transportation. Now onto the other issues, so first one being accessibility. Um, when we first got this project, our, one of our goals was to make the building accessible to, um, everyone. However, the right of way in front of the building is only twenty feet wide today, and the stairs that are there are already approaching about one to two feet into that right of way. In order to provide a handicap accessible ramp, we'd be approaching far further into the existing road, which would then probably restrict the current two-way road down to an indecent width. Um, so therefore, while we would love to make it handicap accessible, at this time, we don't really see that it's a super feasible option. Um, and then kind of similarly sidewalks, we see to, uh, one of your comments was that we should provide sidewalks in front of the building, um, super understandable comment, again, however, because the right of way is so narrow and that the existing and proposed stairs approach into that right of way, that's already kind of narrow for a two-way, two-lane road, uh, we don't anticipate that, even if you did a minimal forklift by sidewalk and six-inch curb, we don't anticipate that it would really be feasible and still be able to maintain the full width you need for a two-way road. So that's kind of all that I had, Greg, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just wanted to say, uh, building is an existing painted building. They're only gonna maintain that, while, while that, uh, housing and buildings around this area and the street, uh, Vanderhaven, I would kind of have the color to them, so I maintain that. A condition would probably be more of a, a, additional building, and that'll just be to kind of match the property that's directly to the quest of it.
You guys have any questions for us?
I have one question on the, on the, I have like an access. Instead of rebuilding the stairs, couldn't you run a ramp across the whole front of the building? So that you access it from the end of the building and come up, so that someone in a wheelchair might be able to access it without the, without encroaching further on the roadway?
Yep, so you do make a great point, and that's the first thought that we had, however, uh, due to the smoke requirements for an ADA accessible ramp and the width of that building only getting to think about forty feet, twenty-five feet, we unfortunately don't have enough run out to be able to get down at following ADA's maximum, so without adding a switchback, which would therefore be out of the.
Is there the, I guess it's just the, the property immediately to the south, is, do we know who controls that?
Don't know specifically, but I, I know you asked for that.
Okay. No, it's not, runs it, uh, as a contract with First Club, yeah.
It's, I mean, there, there are, there are obviously like the legal, you know, who controls what, but in practically, when looking at the, at the, um, street view here, I mean, there, there's, there's essentially not, like, there's effectively not that right of way already, and running out the distance to the south would be like an incredible opportunity to do that and solve all of the other issues. I don't know if that's like a thing that, you know, Unity House would want to try to explore, but, um, if, if that was a possibility, there's, it would connect to the limited amount of sidewalk that is to the south. Um, I, I don't know if that's a possibility or not for Unity House, but it, it might be worth exploring.
Definitely explore that, I'm not sure if it would, if it's a use of that, so the property, you know, probably would extend that ramp. Ready to finish for us, probably pretty easy, I looked at a thirty-six, but a ramp, which would essentially cover that entire lot.
Um, the comment about greenery, you, you mentioned that you're looking to have lawn in the back, is there any sort of use of that space that is envisioned now?
Nothing other than just access. There's a property on the back there that does seem to, Eric, there's some fence there currently.
Okay, because otherwise I would suggest not making it lawn, maybe it's something else. Um, but I understand that, that interest in trying to be a good neighbor. I did also see this, uh, where, or just with the page above it, about the tree protection, which I think is admirable. Um, can you just talk a little bit about the construction of the addition, are they, is it gonna be a crane dropping it in from the south side?
Um, I don't see that probably happening, it's a concrete foundation, so it could be construction, so probably enough right move of the, just a slope to the west side.
So just go on site, no heavy vehicle?
Yeah.
So, or anything like that, because the, the main concern with the mature trees is compaction, right? So I like the little boxes of like, oh, maybe, maybe we can solve the problem. Do you know what, uh, type of trees they are?
Um, if they're not listed, they might be listed on the, um, one of the first sheets of the existing conditions.
I couldn't find it on the plan on that one.
Yeah, I don't think they are, unfortunately.
The street view, I was like trying to figure it out. You know, we do have these massive land of trees, and if that, yeah, if there's something like that, I would be like, kinda maybe, maybe remove and replace it.
But that tree does overlap the property in our to the west. You know, and so there is. Serving that, but it's.
Oh yeah, I mean, in most cases, I would not, would not say do anything to it. Um, do you have a distance between the bike rack and the last stair?
I believe it was at least, I would have to measure it precisely, but so we have at least a five-foot landing at the bottom of the stair. Um, and then the bike rack itself, it's probably the center of it approximately another four to five feet.
Oh, is that landing, uh, at grade? Or is that? Okay.
Yeah.
I, I used to walk by this down Earl Street every day to go to work for about a year on my commute, and so I would look at this building often and think about like, what's going on with this thing? Somebody rescue it, so when I saw it. Suzanne? So, uh, you know, I'm inclined to say this is a complete application, I'll, I'll make that motion. Um, we'll be able to open up a public hearing at the next meeting, well, the next public hearing, and be able to have the vote come period. Um, is there anything, it sounds like we're requesting.
You guys need to take a vote. All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Eric. Um, it sounds like at least one of us would like you to look into that south side access, uh, feasibility of that, so. Otherwise, are there any other things we'd like to attend to? Okay.
It's a creative project, thank you.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Um.
All right, so you, you want to schedule it here?
Yeah, would you, is your timeline, and it seems like you're ready to go on to the January agenda?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we table this project's launch in the January agenda.
I'll second. All there.
Aye.
So much.
Is there anything you all want to discuss before we wrap it up?
Do you have, do you have anything else? I mean, it's eleven, uh.
Were you guys able to, were you guys able to decide?
Yeah.
We made the section.
Was it a draft before?
Sure.
I, I thought it was left. Yeah, it, it definitely informs my, my understanding of things. Um, is seventeen seventy-six, six half, is that, is, what's running in order with that?
Still pending, uh, their revisions, um, to their site plan based on that first review of their engineer, third-party engineer.
Okay.
Um, once they, once they update their site plan, we submit it back to the third-party engineering firm. Uh, and then, um, if I, they've satisfied all of those comments and suggestions, we bring that forward to subcommittee of sustainability.
So would you remind me which is seventeen seventy?
That's the, the student housing.
Horizon Building?
No, Horizon Building.
Oh, yeah.
And then we had another subcommittee.
There were subcommittees that were for, uh, twenty-one, First Street, YWCA, uh, essentially, you know, each, each, each advocate that had had their site plan sent out to third-party review has yet to provide by department of the top graded site plan, submit it back to that third-party engineer.
Hmm.
So, and we still have, we still have some, I have possession of it, so. They put along during the warranty.
And the third one's eighteen eighteen fifth, is that right?
Eighteen eighteen fifth, yeah.
Okay, so they're all just hanging out.
All in love, all.
Okay, cool, that's all I want to make sure.
It's good for an update, and I keep walking by and saying, what's going on?
I'll, I'll just take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I would say already.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, happy Thanksgiving.
And to you.
The, uh, surgery or something?
He's fallen down the level.
Uh, I feel like he's of the vintage where every.